I want to call the meeting to order. Yes, please. Alrighty, first order of business is everybody up to date, Sarah? On which are taxes starting? Everybody's up to date?
Yes.
Okay. Then for the order in which we'll be taking the matters this evening are, number one will be 2015-17 Joshua Brain, 33 Dearman Close. Number two will be 2015-35 Robin Kolatsky, 8 Richmond Hill.
That one's off yet done?
That is off?
Yeah, we removed it. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's off?
Yes. Actually, when we carry it off, we can carry it over one more time. The patio within our property on, come back for that.
Oh, you spelled it that way?
I spelled it that way.
Oh, okay.
So is the HOA coming back then?
She's going to decide.
Whether to either do it or take it out?
She can take, she can remove portion that's not on property, or finish the report, or she can...
Go to the HOA.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so, okay, so...
We have to talk before.
Alright. Number two then will be 2015-37 Norquist, 28 Cedar Lawn Road. Number three will be 2015-34 McGowan and Burgos, 286 Riverview Road. Number four will be 2016-03 Isburn Corporation, North Broadway. And number five will be 2016-01 Kumar and Sash Street, 36 North Brook Lane. Okay, so, first order of business, 2015-17 Joshua Brain.
Good evening, Pat Steinschneider appearing on behalf of the applicant. We haven't been here for a while. And I'm not going to try and take a lot of time tonight, but I just want to kind of update where we stand. We had a sidewalk, which I thought went well, and tonight, the only thing I think we can really talk about is whether there were any concerns about massing or size pertaining to that positioning of the building. What we aren't prepared to do tonight is we're still working with the issues of drainage. One of the things that we have come up with is in the 2002 storm water study, this property had a wooded filter strip shown on it, and it doesn't show anywhere else, but when we were going through things, you know, Doug found it and said he wanted us to kind of address this, so I've actually gone back to Cronin Engineering and say, what is it? And what is it supposed to accomplish? And so that might change some of our drainage stuff. So, we're not prepared to have any final decision tonight, but I didn't want to let too much more time go by, since we had the sidewalk, in case there were any reactions to that walk that we should be addressing.
Okay. Any comments from the board members? George?
The, part of the comments in here from the engineers was about your proposal about doing vegetation landscaping to kind of hide this wall and your pool, and they both seem to disagree if that's going to work, if that's what I...
I think that was Lucille's?
Yeah, I think that was Lucille's memo.
Right.
And I think what they proposed, she was uncomfortable with.
Correct.
The latest proposal?
Yes, did you see?
I haven't seen what her comments were, because my understanding was she had met with Steve Lopez, and the two of them had worked everything out, but...
Well, one of the comments recommended was, "I am not sure if the pool area and wall can be adequately screened as offered due to the grades and existing rock layers. Planning Board may want to consider suggestions to the operating that revision of the pool shape and size be considered, and/or consideration of elimination of the pool altogether to better conform with various site constraints." Is continuation of...
Yeah, well, we had the sidewalk. I mean, obviously, the landscaping is an issue in itself, and I'll get this, just to even see why I wasn't aware of that.
But see, the landscaping actually is part of it, because, at least for me, the concern was the visibility of this. And if you can't screen it as you're proposing, then it becomes a completely different thing.
Agreed. I'm not saying the landscaping doesn't matter. I'm saying, I don't have an answer to the landscaping, because it was just appearing now. It wasn't my awareness that there was a problem with landscaping, so I'll take that up with them. What I'm referring to is the fact that when we had the sidewalk, we figured out where the pool was, where the wall was, and whether there was any concern that the board had at that point of that location. You know, to see if there's something else, if we're going to have to look at this with landscaping, do we need to look at this with anything else? The other thing I will point out is that when we found that drawing that was done in 2002, the wall is shown on that plan. So that wall was on the original plan. That's something that is...
Which wall?
The wall that we're proposing. It's on the Cronin approved site plan. So, you know, I'm not...
Not that location?
Basically, in the...
Not in the wood land filter floor?
About eight feet different than what it is on there, but it's in that general...
It's not in that buffer?
Well, we're having to figure out what that buffer is supposed to do, because of course, the wall accomplishes much of what the woodland, the wood filter strip accomplishes, and it decelerates the water, and it allows it to percolate in, instead of sheeting too quickly and running the risk of reaching the road and freezing on the road in the winter time or something like that. So, it's a large thing that needs to be worked out, that we're processing.
Right, but maybe...
Wouldn't it be a...
I think that's something the engineers have to work on, because that wall is not in this buffer. And what we were working on yesterday was, Pat, Patty was mitigation for some of this woodland buffer, which is really just a natural filter, clean up the water before it runs into the public system, which...
A private system, before it gets to the public system, right.
But it's not just an engineering thing, it's an aesthetic thing, because then by having woodlands like that, there is a...
Right.
A more natural aspect...
When we say woodlands, there were no trees, so there was just one or two trees there, and it was a, it was a mostly barren hill with rocks exposed, as you saw.
Right. Okay, so that, it wasn't that there are planting trees there?
No, we want plantings where we can get them.
Back to my same thing, which is that it is a topic that needs to get resolved before the bulk issue gets resolved.
Oh, exactly.
And I was curious what, I mean, I saw it thereafter, I didn't go for that meeting, what the other board members, their reaction to it, given what's being proposed.
Well, I thought the positive was that the wall was going to have more natural look and not be a...
That was going to be my question.
A manufactured wall, or, you know, a totally stacked wall. So I thought that was a positive. But you're still going to need to buffer it with landscaping that's adequate to hide that pool.
Right. I was going to mention, the type of wall will influence the type of decisions on the landscaping. If it's a sheer vertical wall 10 feet high, it's a lot different than a sort of tumbled rock look.
Right, it's a tumbled rock look, I think the maximum height we have is five feet.
That's a technical term.
Tumbled rock. Tumbled walls, it's a dry, well, I know...
You knew what I meant.
I know exactly what he means.
Hopefully, tumbling not too much.
Yeah, not continuing to tumble, at least if it tumbles, it tumbles back on itself as a dry wall and gets stronger. So, that's what our intent is, and it, I think at the highest at this point is five feet. So what we'll do is, we'll take a look at that as we go through, because we have to figure this other stuff out anyway.
Now, Patty, what I would like you to do, if you would, when you do your plans, put everything on one plan, instead of coming back for landscaping and coming back for walls. Do everything on the plan so we can see it.
We haven't, that's how we haven't.
But you seem to be changing things each time you come in.
Um, we are still showing everything on the plans, and so if we're changing something on, say, the drainage, we're also showing the walls and the landscaping. I think what Doug is looking for us to do is to show on the landscaping plan where the Coltech units are located, so we know we don't have a conflict.
Okay.
And just make sure there's no conflict, I mean, it's...
Right. And make sure there's no conflict with rock, which you know is plentiful on the site.
Yeah, how we avoid the conflict with rock, I'm relying upon you to tell me how to do that.
Me?
I have no idea.
You do the deep testing.
It's, we don't have to do deep testing either. All we have to do is walk there.
Shout.
Very shout.
Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Jan?
E C B, I walked the site.
Come on, come up and take the microphone.
Jan Blair, E C B. I walked the site with Steve Lopez and Lucille, and that was our concern, that the trees that are being removed, it's such a steep slope, that there should be more screening and more trees along the road going down, and then at the base, and then there's areas. And stabilization of that slope, because it's extremely steep, as you know, and loss of rock. So, those were our comments that we agreed on the day that we took the walk.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, obviously, I hadn't had it. I hadn't read this before.
Alright.
So I'll definitely study it carefully, but, I mean, that is our intent, and that's the plan. I realize that it doesn't do any good for us to have an intent if it can't be implemented, so finding the balance that all these things can hold together is a goal.
Okay. Any other comments? Nope.
I have nothing to say. Happy New Year.
I had shoulder surgery, and I didn't walk the site, so I have to go to the end, so, you know, I...
How do you hurt your shoulder?
I can't comment, I'm good.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot, man.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item is 2015-37 Norquist, 28 Cedar Lawn Road.
Good evening. Matthew Barrett, I'm the architect for this application. This is a proposal for a new front porch on an existing residence. We do have some coverage issues. We'll go to the zoning board for that, but other than that, it's a pretty straightforward application. Again, the porch is in the front of the house, we're headed a new walkway, we need a just a walkway and an existing concrete landing, and we're continuing with a new front porch.
Any comments from any of the board members?
I think heading a porch is an excellent idea.
Any comments?
Put that out there.
Any comments for anyone in the audience? No? Karen, do you have a resolution on this one?
Yeah, I drafted a resolution, whereas in November 2015, Norquist applied for site evaluation plans, who were to construct a new front porch on an existing residence in 28 Cedar Lawn Road, along with a walkway and drainage system, and the planning board held a public hearing on application on December 2nd, right for 2105, that transcribed it. And January 6th, 2016, and whereas the variances were required for coverage, and whereas the comments in the memorandum of honor engineering dated December 1st were adequately addressed, except for a few small items, and whereas the actions touched upon secret, resolved that the planning board grants the application for site plan approval, but the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled New Front Porch, Norquist Residence, subject to the applicant's warrant receiving a variance from the zoning board of appeals for coverage, and to comply with the items listed in the January 5th memorandum.
Can have a motion to adopt the resolution? Second? All in, any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Matthew Barrett, I just wanted to fix the one first position on there.
Thank you.
Next item is 2016-03 Isburn Corporation, North Broadway.
Good evening, board, how you do? Happy New Year.
Your name, please?
Uziah Cooper, architect, West Chester Margula, also my client Bernie, and Isabel Milano. This project is a proposal of a new two-story home on a subdivided plot. It was subdivided in 2006. And this is the original subdivision of the plot. This is my client's home, and this is the plot that we want to develop. So basically...
Client's existing.
Yes, this is, yeah, this is a client's existing home, and then the site that we wanted to develop. Alright. So, two-story home. There's a rendering of it. And then, go through the floor plans. Site plan. So basically, somewhat of a center hall colonial, enter, stair, living room to the left, dining room to the right, large kitchen with a somewhat open concept breakfast and family room area, closet, powder room, second floor, you have two, three common bedrooms, two common baths, and then a master bedroom suite, basically. And because of the challenges, because the site slopes from the front to the rear, well, basically, this rear wall is about 10 to 12 feet, we would like to place the garage underneath in the basement. We have a garage with a secondary entrance, mudroom entrance that comes up to the first floor with a bath downstairs.
How do you get to the garage?
Yeah, where's the...
Oh, the driver's here.
They have a site plan and a landscape plan?
Yeah, here's the site plan. This is, this is not Broadway, this is the driveway here, and then you pull into the garage here, and that's why, the entrance is here. And landscape plan?
So that driveway is within your property?
Yes, sir.
This is the property line, this is the driveway line here. So it is within the property.
So the front door, similar to the existing Milano house, will be, actually, will be...
Facing North Broadway.
Facing north. Will be facing north?
The front door will be.
The front door will be, or we'll have to drive around the side to get into the...
Just like my house.
The garage, okay.
Same as mine.
So this is not Broadway here, I guess this might be easier to see. This is not Broadway, this is the driveway, and you pull in to the side, the side entrances, and then you have the, like, the mudroom door, basically, would be here.
Okay.
And the front door is here, with the wall.
Is there, is there a, is there a different road though? Because isn't it Brace Bridge or something? I mean, I...
That's on the other side.
That's on this side, yeah. I can show you.
I've driven by that too many times, trying to figure out how you get into the house, and I just, no, just...
Well, there's a cut.
Brace, Brace Bridge is here, basically. So this is my client's home, this is the property we want to develop, and this is Brace Bridge.
Okay.
So you would enter the developed property here, off of North Broadway.
Yeah, the south end of, of the second lot, that the proposed lot to be developed, there is a break-in stone wall.
Right.
And there are evergreen trees growing in front of it. Or behind it, actually, behind the stone wall.
Yeah, so showing on the landscape plan, we want to remove, you know, those four evergreens that are in front of the statue, you know, that, that entrance, and enter there. I think there's already an existing curb cut here.
Is there a curb cut, or is it just that there's a break-in?
No, there's no curb cut.
There's no curb cut, okay.
So you have to go to the state DOT to get a...
I'll need DOT approval.
I could clarify that. I'm Bernie Milano, that's my house.
Say it again at the mic.
Bernie Milano, that's my house next to it. When we had this, this building lot approved, those years ago, it was Arlington required, that when I built, my father and I built that stone wall, to identify those two piers and the driveway for that lot for future development. So that is the entrance that the town, the village had required, along with the wall. Thank you. No, no, I'm just saying, I wanted to just make it clear that that's where, you know...
So we did receive the engineers' comments, and I just received the landscape office comments, so we will address them later.
Okay. So it appears that the variances have expired for the, well, there's a lot size variance and a width variance that were granted by the zoning board back in 2006, when it was, when the subdivision was approved. So it appears that those have to expire, so you'll have to go back to the ZBA for those. And then I guess also Doug made note in here too, that there are potential other variances that may be required, that you may have to come, you're going to have to come back to us with the pool or the site plan and also discussion, and then go back to the ZBA, I think, for those second set of variances. Alright, because those second set of variances will be, will be determined by what the site plan is.
Yeah, these, we need confirmation that the variances have not expired or renewed the variances, which should be a formality, but we're not going to promise, you know, we can't promise this, what the ZBA is going to do. The Broadway buffer activity, although you have a buffer line there and shown, the zoning board, by the, by the regulation, has the only authority to approve with landscaping what you do there. So you're going to have to go back after that, but most of your work will be done here at the planning board, and they should, like, the landscape plan you proposed, keep your intrusions in the front walkway and stuff as minimal as possible, to benefit your, you know, your approval through there. Your coverage is over right now, and your F A R may be over, we have to talk about degrading. I'm sure you don't want variances for that, so you're probably going to design around that. So you have a little bit of work to do, work with Doug on some of that stuff. I'm curious to see the front elevation and existing grade and proposed grade, to confirm that it's not more than, they're about three feet, because then you'd have a variance issue.
Well, it is a new home, so we can lower and raise the home.
Exactly.
But right now, it's designed as two feet above the initial grade, but I can show that on the elevation.
Yeah, it was well documented, and then it was a little contradictory with some of the elevations to the site plan. So Doug has asked you for specific information that should help discuss with that.
No problem. I have no problem providing that information.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just more details and more, you know, the unity through the elevation.
On the elevation, this front elevation, you know, that's basically two steps.
Yeah, no, but we couldn't, on the site plan, we couldn't determine...
Exactly.
The elevation of existing and proposed.
Got you.
So, you can go to us on the corners, or you can go to us on the elevations.
No problem, definitely.
And then you can see on the, these are the south elevations, the rotating wall on the left side, on the right, left side of the garage, left side of the garage stood.
Here.
There's an rotating wall on the site plan.
On the site plan, got you.
So, those are the, those are the kinds of things we're looking for consistency in the plan.
Okay.
Because again, that's a potential coverage issue.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Actually, for Doug, a big roof, big driveway, and I saw it as a subsurface, I mean, that's a lot of water. Did you check the capacities?
Yeah, it seems a little light, but they still have to provide calculations and...
There's, there's a bunch of...
My intuition says it's a lot of water. And my second question is, on the driveway, is there any collection system, or is there a potential for sheet flow to the property to the south?
There's a collection and a...
I didn't see that. We don't want to flood the guy out on the south.
Right here, these are the Coltechs.
Yeah, but when you go down the, oh, okay, yeah, I see, yeah, right.
This is coming down the driveway.
Is there, is there way of the driveway flow getting to them, or?
Yeah, this is the low point of the site, actually, so everything...
What about south? That's a low point going east to west, but what about north to south?
Can't run that way.
Well, you might say that, but does it show you can't run that way?
This is 186, so it's, you know, the side is still moving down.
Alright, okay, as long as the driveway is...
This is 200 here also, so this is, so the side is sloping down that way, so this is the low point of the site.
Okay. Just as long as it's big enough.
Yeah, and I think we asked for some more grading to be shown, and things like that, so...
I think you also asked for...
They're going to have to address that. We did have some comments in there with...
There are other issues about scale too, that need to be documented, about the size of this thing in comparison to other projects in the area. Just so we can get a sense that it's...
Well, it's almost the exact same size of the house that's here, so, that's, I know for sure. But I can definitely look at the...
We'll give you a sample of one in the neighborhood.
Right.
And then just add houses that are missing from it.
Okay.
We have one from down the street.
Okay.
Should be a good tool for you to use.
Sounds great, sounds great.
It always helps when you bring pictures.
I'll give them one that is down the street.
Okay. Right, so we get an idea of what...
So we get an idea, and you can use some of that information.
Number, that is what Larry said too, number eight, it's in the view preservation overlay district, so the board will usually ask for, it's like a photo of what's before and what's, what's after there, so they can see what's being, if there's any views being obstructed, and things like that. I mean, it's all trees.
Again, we'll go over again. They'll take photographs from across the street at different, at different visual points, show it on the plan when we took the photographs.
Right.
And then pencil line in the building, proposed building.
Okay.
And then they'll see what their views missing are.
Okay.
How about Broadway?
Can we get it done?
Any other questions from, comments from the board? Any comments from anyone in the public?
Ask a question.
Yep.
I'm with the neighbors.
Yeah, you have to introduce yourself, your name, your address, and all your...
I'm Natalia Broide, 93 North Broadway, we're the immediate neighbors.
And all your questions will be addressed to the chairman.
Right. Sorry to do it this way, but you guys don't talk to us, so I need to ask, is that house going to be for sale, or is it going to be just your house, or whatever, reserve in the family?
Can I answer that? It's listed, yeah, it's for sale. Listed for sale.
Jan Blair, E C B. Our main concern was the Broadway buffer, and not having anything in that Broadway buffer. And I noticed there were a couple of lights, it said lamps, but I wasn't sure what kind of lamps, or how big, how bright, what, you know, what it entails, and if there's anything else going in the Broadway buffer. I know you mentioned they'd have to go with the ZBA for anything that goes in there, but that's, that's our concern.
Jan, Doug, you need the microphone. You need the microphone.
Grab to the second microphone.
I'm not, I'm not talking.
You can use one, it's good.
I think, I think these lamps are actually, I know there is a lamp on the site right now, right?
What do you like?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, I think there are existing lamps on the site right now, so we're just actually keeping them. But I will make sure of that. And also, in the buffer, are you talking about vegetation, trees, also?
Just the Broadway buffer, the 50-foot buffer.
No, but I mean, are you, are you referencing trees in the buffer? Are you concerned about the trees in the buffer?
Not landscaping, but...
Not landscaping, but just, okay, so, yeah, I think, I know for sure there is a lamp there. I, I'm not exactly sure how many, but I, I've walked past that lamp.
I just saw it on the drawing, so...
Okay, no problem.
But it, it's hardscape, so driveway or walkways or anything, steps, stairs, in the Broadway buffer, that's really...
Well, okay, so, so this is a walkway that's within the buffer? Because the buffer, the buffer is 50 feet, right?
Right.
So the house is at 50 feet, basically, maybe 51. I can look at the zoning, but it's, so, so the walkway is within the buffer, so you're saying that you have an issue with the walkway to the front door within the buffer?
Well, we've always been very protective of the Broadway buffer, we've...
Walkways and driveways are permitted in the buffer.
Okay.
Okay.
Beyond that.
Beyond that, I guess.
Walkways to a house.
To a house, you can walk there.
You have a wandering yard, a walkway to the house.
You can see here that...
This, this, this is, this is the 50-foot line.
Right.
So, that's the walkway to the home, and then it's the driveway. And, okay, and is it, there's an existing...
Yes.
This is an existing lab, and this is an existing lab.
So they, they are already there within the buffer, because this is an existing server, actually.
That's what I saw.
So...
One of our questions was, is it going to stay, or if not, should it be marked or be removed?
You'll have to make the determination. You'll have to make the determination.
Yeah, I'd have to speak with my client, but...
It's a proposal. They have to go anyway to the ZBA. It's an intrusion, so they have to go to the ZBA.
Talking about this little lamp that sits and shines up on the tree is what we're talking about. Okay, it's in the ground, okay. That's all it is.
Need to know.
Okay, we just need, whatever you want to do, just call them.
Right, okay.
Well, they're showing it is existing to remain, but we will discuss it.
And the E C B will probably bring it up at the zoning board, that's why.
Okay.
Pat, I have a question and a comment. I know there's some easements related, the subdivision involves some easements. The development of this property doesn't, the development of this property doesn't affect any of the easements, does it, or doesn't?
Well, from, from the survey that was taken, this is a proposed 20-foot utility easement that's at the rear of the property, and none of the built or developed area is within that easement.
Yeah, but it was, there was some, there was an excess easement as well, I recall, in connection with the subdivision approval, but that's not, what you're saying is all the driveway and walkway around your property?
Yes.
Okay, so then, then it would affect it.
I think that access easement was probably on the other side.
Okay, that's okay then, as long, I just wanted to know whether this affected it. And then the only other comment I wanted to make, Pat made the point, but just so you understand, because we've been talking about a lot of different variances here, the only thing that you're initially going to the zoning board for is to renew the, all the variances that expired, you know, not...
And then I have to come back to the planning board, and then you might send me back if you want to keep...
If you come in with a large adult in coverage.
I understood that, but thank you very much. I was going to ask that question again.
Okay, anything else? Any other comments? Void? No? Okay, well then, we'll see you next month.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next, next item is 2015-34 McGowan and Burgos, 286 Riverview Road.
We're here back again for our revised site plan review. We need a few changes because we're, we'd like to raise the roof of the house. This, right now, this is a bleam roof, and this portion of the roof comes down so low that there's a limited headroom, and it's not a very useful space. So I hear that.
Is that the back of the house? That's the back of the house for the...
Yes. I'm going to pass around these pictures because you may not be able to see this. This is an interior view, and it shows how the roof dives down. This part of the house, this, a lounge area. And we've been looking at contractors' bids, and we've decided that we should, it would be a better space if we could raise that. But this is at the same level as the roof next to it. So this is the pink highlighted area. I just wanted to show you what we came here, what we did last time was the raising of the roof here. There's a well here, and this little roof will be entry out from the house. And this shaded area just shows a new, new steps that have been, that we'd like to put into project, and we had that on the drawings previously. So here, we're back today to discuss actually raising of the roof.
Was that area shown on any of the photos?
Christina.
I want to pass these around.
Just remember, the original planning board approval had the stairs towards the house more over the walkway.
That's true.
Yeah, so they relocated, which created a smaller increase of coverage, which they, like, it was probably just a drafting error that they've corrected and received the variance for, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. So they've already gotten the mariance?
For that, that piece of coverage.
Yes, actually.
Just for...
We added information based on the survey, and that affected the location of the new steps. I'm going to just pass out these photographs so that you can take a look. This is the interior shop trying to place. This is the back of the house, and we have a high roof here and a very low roof to the left. And when you go from this place to your space, you have to actually duck under the rafters. We decided we really like to raise this up so that we can make this a more usable space. And this is the front of the house. There's an old St. Louis piece here. We're going to eliminate that. And when we raise the roof to the back, you will probably hardly notice it. It's aligned with the ridge that's already existing. And then I just have a few more pictures of the front of the house if you're interested. We could skip this picture. This is the house that's been asked to be moved. Now, we've had...
Excuse me, where is this on the site plan?
This, those windows are actually here.
They're, they're, these are in?
Yes.
In here, okay, so then, on this side that you want to raise the roof?
Is the low part that is here currently, and you want to raise this up to align with that. I could show you the elevation if you can understand.
Okay, so then from the front, it seems like you see that raised portion from the front now, so you're going to see it longer along the front.
Longer. This is all floor plan showing. The pink area is where we're raising the roof. We were, we were, we were raising this because this is a well, and we discussed that at the last meeting. This area, this is a section that we want to, we want to extend. And here, this is the left elevation, this is the front of the house, so you would not see the raised portion there. This is the south elevation, and the gale comes up over the central room, but it comes back down towards the south at the south elevation. What we want to do is extend this portion so that it covers the lounge. This is a roof plan showing the area from last year. And this is the rear elevation showing the portion of the roof that we want to expand. Right now, the low, the roof, the middle roof returns straight across. We want to move it down and have the new roof.
So none of that addition, none of that will be seen from the front? That doesn't change the front?
You know, I should have hatched it, but it will change the front. This, this, this actually does come towards this end. This should actually extend it. This distance here is the same here, so you will see more of the higher roof. Down this where it should be.
New windows there, so it's not just a blank wall.
No, this whole, yes, we're going to put high windows.
But that's facing out the back?
It's facing the back.
So you're going to have a, just a, it's an empty roof line there too, just like exists now, next to it. There's not going to be any windows?
Up above?
Yeah.
There will not be any windows.
Right, no skylights.
We have new skylights, but they've, they've been on our plan since then. And just so you can understand what's happening in section, I brought the sections with me to show you that.
Christina, can you talk to the microphone? I'm sorry for the transcript.
This is a section that's cut through the pool room and the lounge. The lounge is at a higher level, and these rafters come down very low here right now, and this is the raised portion.
At the rear?
At the rear of the house, yes.
That's what's shown in the photograph I just had?
Yeah, it shows, you can only really see this on the back. From the front, you're just going to see more of the higher roof.
Okay.
And this is a small piece where we have to extend the roof in order to get up the steps and into that space. Now, when we did these, we found out that when we looked at the height of the space, it's a small portion that's actually higher than 12 feet. So we revised the floor initial calculations today. Because we found that this, there is an 85 square feet additional floor area because we have to double the floor area where we have a ceiling height over 12.
Does that still keep you under the, the maximum floor area permitted?
No.
And the variance for floor?
The variance, definitely. The existing floor area is 5,078. The maximum allowed is 4,0312, so the house is already non-conforming. The additional area, and it's really not because we're increasing the floor area, it's because we have to double the floor area because of the height over 12 feet, is another 85 square feet. That brings us to 5,873 square feet.
Any comments?
Ed, Doug, I assume you looked at the structural integrity of changing that roof line, because it's, it's not peaked anymore, it's a straight...
That will be done at building prep.
Okay.
So I have two questions. Why is, why did they do it the way that they did it?
That was an item, no.
We didn't do it.
Didn't have it done.
No, but could you find a logic for why they did that, other than there were small people?
Well, the roof is pitched up on one end because I guess...
The microphone.
He used, I'm sorry, it's pitched up on one end because it's shown in one of the original building permits, I guess. I guess the, the guidance, he used to play golf, or he'd hit the, whatever you call it. He drive, he used one side as a driving range, so that's why it's pitched up on that end. So it just returns to normal.
It's quirky.
Yes.
I think originally, we thought we would just renovate the existing structure, but we felt that because of all the expense going into this, we might as well eliminate that low headroom and make this a usable space.
The, the roof material is?
Five-inch heels.
Okay, and the third question was really about this variance. So because it's over 12 feet, and they have this little nook for birds up there, they have to go get a, is there anything that we can do here? No, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an unfortunate circumstance that's...
Couldn't you change the, you could change the slope, right? And then you wouldn't have to do that. I'm just trying to help.
We can flatten the roof, the ceiling.
Or...
It just wouldn't be as clean looking, but we can flatten the ceiling at 12 feet, so we wouldn't have to increase the floor area.
I can visualize that.
Yeah, I tried, and...
Any comments from anyone in the audience? No, any further comments from the board members? Now, I mean, Mary, did we, did we prepare a resolution?
Yeah, I actually did prepare a resolution, but unfortunately, we did not have the latest back, so you see some crossouts on this, which is, I think it's good to know tonight. On the report, the planning board grants site plan approval to McGowan and Burgos to renovate the pool house and make alterations to the residence at 286 Riverview Road. Subject to the applicants receiving variances from zoning board appeals for coverage and incursion into the front yard setback, the ZBA granted the variances for coverage and incursion to the front yard. In December 2015, the applicant supplied for revised site plan approval because their plans changed and the plans approved by the planning board in November. That is, the stairs were moved and the roof line changed. And was the changes involve an increase in F A R, which requires a variance from the ZBA? That's one of the changes here before I thought the stairs also required a coverage one, so that's why I crossed it out. It's titled "direction," it's obvious the planning board grants the application for revised site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled renovations to the pool house of the McGowan and Burgos residence, subject to the applicants wanting, receiving a variance from the ZBA for F A R increase and complying with the acts in the January 5th, 2016, of management and engineering, which is following.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Wait a minute.
Go.
I gave one, is one of the ones yellow?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have to pass this up. This is not a final, this is the one I brought from, so this one, I have the one being passed around.
Should this crap?
That's signed too, so.
So do void on that or something.
I think it's for my autograph collection.
Enjoy yourself.
So a motion to approve?
You really think it's going to be worth something?
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Or opposed?
Don't go away.
Christina, get the right position.
That's what you came for. Be kind enough to give one to Mary.
All right, Christina, hi. No, one is yours.
Next item on the agenda is 2016-01 Kumar and Sastre, 36th North Brook Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and this is the board, thank you. My name is Craig Studer for the applicant. Mr. and Mrs. Commander, I refer to the names. We're not here tonight, if you could join us for business travel. This application is for...
Better take the microphone.
But this application is for a small swimming pool and addition out the back of the house. Let me just back up. This is lot 36 in the Legend Hollow subdivision. Once now as a subdivision of Hart's Mountain, where some of this lot coverage issues were settled. Hart's Lee Country Club runs through here. This is the property that was one time Dina Goldsmith, she had a large stucco house that's terraced out the back. And the Semetis property is here, and over here is the Gelman's property. What we're proposing to do is to create a bedroom suite here for his ailing, aging mother on the first floor, that he would circumvent through the house, modify the mudroom, so she could come on the first floor and have a first-floor bedroom and bathroom and closet. And also, we're proposing a swimming pool that's just fairly narrow and about 40 feet long. There's an existing deck and an existing covered porch here. Underneath that deck, they're proposing to put a patio which won't affect coverage. Underneath a portion of this addition, and I'm going to, the architectural drawings were submitted, and we'll go over that, would be another little patio, perhaps a location for an above-ground spa and storage area, which is really a mechanical room for the purposes of the pool equipment. This sits down from North Brook Road, you go downhill to the driveway. All of our improvements will not be visible from any of the adjacent neighbors. The addition would be visible from Gelman, but the pool would not be. And the house that was formerly Goldsmith sits way up in this area here. There are several issues that this application is going to have to contend with, and that being lot coverage, F A R, and the setback the way we have the pool designed right now. The building setback is for building, the building envelope is represented on the plans as an, here as the dotted line. That's 15 foot. A swimming pool has to maintain a 20-foot setback. So we're asking, we will be asking for a variance there. Lot coverage and F A R. Lot coverage is existing patios that are on this property. And when we produced the plans, we were on the assumption that we were removing all those patios, which we still propose to do, and walkways, and we were going to reduce an existing non-conformity. The same will still happen, however, what changed in my understanding is a lot of those existing patios have not been documented in the town file. So therefore, any of the removal that we're proposing for those patios, and what I have to do is to sit with that and figure out if it's all the patios or not, but this is the area of patios that we're referring to, which is roughly 600 square feet. But all these areas that are shaded are for removal. This is an access way for construction. We have a stockpile area, some of the notes that we received from the engineer refers to these elements on the plan, where are they? So I'm not sure if all the patios here, the total of 600 square feet, or existing nonconforming that were never documented or not. So when we come back to you before you, again, with this application, after we go to ZBA, we're going to figure that out. And present it to you the proper way. The house, as I mentioned, from Lee Overland, architect, and the lot coverage or FAR coverage was presented to you. Now, let's see if I can do this. Do you have this in your documents, one by 17?
I think one of the things you should discuss or announce is that you're also proposing to change the dormers over the garage. I don't think you described that on here.
Well, I'll do that here.
Yeah.
On the cover page represents the modification of those dormers and what was... There were two, maybe three dormers on the front of the house, I don't recall, and the architect has proposed to make it more of a shed roof, picking up more space on the second floor. And as we go through the documents, we'll show that. On the third page, it shows the modifications graphically within the...
I'm sorry, sorry.
Within the house and the connection that they would make to the bedroom suite. It's a one-bedroom with a walk-in closet and a bathroom.
It's connecting the dorms, okay.
Yes.
Wait, how do you explain to me what you mean showing graphically? I'm looking at it. What, how do you know what's new, what's...
Well, that's what I say, it's just shown graphically. This mudroom, we kind of linked it coming in here so they can get into this space.
So is what's colored new?
This is the proposed, that's the existing.
Okay.
So I guess you'd have to look back and forth.
I'd have to look at the two, okay.
Yeah.
The stairs have modified, I'm just going to talk louder if that's all right. Okay. The back staircase was modified, the closets, I believe, have changed slightly, that they're going, the stairs are going to go up over the closet on the first floor. And then there's like a length taking a little space out of the bathroom, out of the garage to get us into that bedroom. Um, can I ask just a second? Sorry, this is the format we received this in. But you can see again, basically, yes. We'll need a little more coordination. I don't know. This is the first floor existing, and you can see the back stairs kind of back up. Turn, hairpins turned back up on themselves, and there's a closet here. That existing closet will remain, but they're shifting the stairs and they're going to go into the closet, so the closet ceiling will be a little warped, and that, which gives them room to create this little hallway, taking space out of the interior space of the garage to get to that addition. So this is all at the first floor, and the pool and the space, you know, the storage area for the pool equipment is below this. Then on the second floor, and this is where the discussion of the dormers, and this is where also the FAR comes in. There were three dormers in the front and a simple shed dormer out the back. And what they're proposing to do is they consolidate those dormers and the space in that to make one big shed roof area. And the same out the back, you know, making a larger shed roof. Perspectives of what that looks like is on a fourth, I'm talking about the front, it's labeled "front entry" that shows over the garage the modification of the roof line. And out the back, it's called Proposed View Number One, shows the modification of the roof line and the addition and the closet below. Proposed View Number Three shows that same addition out the back of the house from this angle here. What's misleading in this illustration here is the pool. They just put the pool in as a placeholder, the slope will, it's not going to be an out-of-a-ground pool, I can tell you straight here. The landscape will slope off from this side of the pool, and that will be landscape holders will be placed.
Are there currently dormers on the pool side, we'll say, of the garage?
One larger dormer, larger than the front, and it's more centrally located. And that's if we go back to the page four, I think it was.
So that's, that's an increase as well on that side?
Of the FAR. The dormer is going to get bigger in the back. That is correct.
And currently, you're, they're over, they're as it is right now?
That is correct. And then the next several pages or sheets are really the elevation of the house. There was an issue, there was a question asked on the engineer report, and I'm sorry, I left it back in my office, so if there's, I forget them, I should please pick them up. But was an issue of building height. The primary structure, the main body of this building, we're maintaining the existing height. We're not modifying the grades up near the building at all, and/or is that height, the primary height of the building changing? Whether it conforms to building height, I personally haven't checked it, we will double-check that for next meeting. But this portion being the main body does not change. The grade at the base of that does not change. This proposal does not change the existing back deck on the west of the side of the house. So, in any case, that's really the building. Now, there was a document that shows how the coverage was for exist, for the FAR and the calculations. And there is a two-story space in the foyer that goes up within the space towards the library and stuff, and that two-story area was calculated in as part of this lot cover, I mean FAR as well, because it's greater than 12 feet. If you look in this area here, the lower cut sheets here, so this calculates the existing, and then these other shaded areas in the lower corners here illustrate the additional FAR. So here you can see, I'm going to pass this around, I'm not sure where it is.
That was counted twice for the balcony, was it?
Yes, sir.
This, this sheet.
This, this was.
No, ma'am. This is in how they look.
That area wasn't...
It's kind of placed.
That was kind of placed. And then, what is on the... Oh, it is.
What, which thing is in it? Because this thing came like, oh, crazy.
Says Lee Overland, Architect LLC.
It got crazy? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's...
Oh.
Wasn't one package, there was a series of packages.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right. It was a fold-up receipt like the zoning analysis.
Well, you have it on a smaller scale.
Yeah, but you can see then the infill and where, you know, the front side being the, really the two spaces between the dormers and the little pickup on either side of the end dormers. And on the back, there's a little bit of a pickup. And then on the first floor behind the garage, where the sharpness elbow is, the left elbow, shows the addition of the bedroom, bathroom addition. So, again, what's driving this whole proposal of the addition and the building addition is to get a first-floor suite on there, we know we're going to have to get two variances because of that, FAR and lot coverage. Lot coverage is also driven by the desire to have a swimming pool. The reason why we're proposing a swimming pool there is because there's currently a walkout basement on the south side of the building. The houses, or the deck is here overlooking the golf course, and it comes down here. These clients of ours are recent owners to the house, they just purchased this from the Scott family. And as we walk the property, right after closing, there's a couple of golf balls here. So their desire is not to have the pool here, where there's also a walkout, like the services. But to keep it over in here, they felt they'd be protected from an errant golf ball, as well as they felt it was tucked into the function of the house, and it's well buffered from any of the neighbors and the golf balls.
Why not change the shape of it or pull it closer to the house and not, not require a variance and not be in that setback?
If we have to, we will. There's a discussion that needs to be made. We tried to maintain 10 feet, because I know some building inspectors like to have a pool 10 feet away. And I think generally what the reason for that is, is when you start excavating for a pool, you over-escalate, and then there's an angle of repose, I'm reading into it, an angle of repose of the natural soils and stuff when you do that. By being 10 feet away, that natural angle of repose for a deep end of a swimming pool will not fall, accidentally fall or undermine the existing footings. With the proper care, it can, and some towns don't allow it, to be less than 10 feet. So we just use that as a rule of thumb, and we didn't want it to overpower, be overpowered by the architecture. We can and may have to move this back.
Why, is it more than 10 feet from the house now?
No, it's 10 feet.
Is it exactly, at all points?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Actually, that corner may not be, but that is also illustrated on one of the plans. Then there's another area that isn't 10, it's over 10 feet. If that's 10 feet, then where the main house is to that house is more than 10 feet. At least that's what my eyes say.
If you get out a scale?
I have a scale here on the site plan. My eyes, I can't see. Yeah, this is exactly 10 from the house, it's less from that octagon projection, the bay window. On this radius here, it's 10, and at this point, by the wall, I'm also, I'm referring to the water wall, the inside pool wall, is what I'm measuring to. And it's eight feet on this corner. So all along here, it's 10 feet from the structure, on this radius it is, and here it's eight feet. So, we can alleviate that by moving it in closer and probably not have a...
Reconfiguring a little bit? Reconfiguring it a little bit?
Yeah. And, and we could probably reduce that variance a little bit. One other comment that was just made, and I saw the notes tonight, from the staff landscape architect, was there are a number of trees, I never quantify them, we will put the list of tree removal on the sheet. There are trees that are not tangible, if we will, to the project that we are asking for removal for, and that was to fold them into the approval process. And those are two trees on the east, the southeast corner of the property, exactly what's shown on the report photo. And those two trees, the client doesn't like because they overhang the house, he felt, and it created too much shade on the house. So he asked if we can go in and remove them. They're not necessary to be removed for the purpose of the construction of the house, they're not necessary to be removed for the purpose of the pool, but I think it's, it's a logical request, and it's being made for the purposes of the house.
There were two substantial trees, I think they were 24 and 30-inch trees.
They were large.
It opens the house, that, the lot is a little dark because it sits down and...
And it's a fairly dense wood to the left, as you're looking at this.
For golf balls.
For golf balls. But, you know, there are trees, and they're illustrated on the plan that we're proposing to remove, that are tangible to the project, as I refer to. These are not.
Well, our consulting landscape architect makes note that there are 164 inches of caliber of trees to be removed. It's 11 trees, eight of which aside from regular, keeping in place for 164 inches. What, what is the mitigation plan for, for that land, for all that removal?
Well, we're proposing some evergreen trees and some shrubs. We are not proposing at this time any deciduous trees. We felt with the existing trees that are on the site, that the loss of those trees that he feels endanger his house and his being...
Are they, are they in bad health or in decline or anything?
I will get an arborist to look at it, the one does have some decline. I mean, there's a tree wells currently on the north side of those two trees. This is the 24-inch oak, and this is the 30-inch oak. It was fairly close. Any of the damage, quite frankly, I'm surprised they didn't die already. But any of the damage was done, was done a long time ago when the house was built, which seems like a lifetime ago.
With your help.
I have a question regarding those trees. The two trees that we're talking about here that are not involved in this permit application, this application?
Yes, sir.
Is it too much to say, like, why are we even looking at those? Why don't they go to the tree commission and get a permit to remove?
Well, I mean, they're coming in at this point for the site plan, it's all part of the site plan, I think.
We were trying to... Just a question. I just hold it in for the same application. But, counsel?
Well...
Oh, I'll argue.
I can, I can argue either side of this, because they are here before site plan, but it really isn't part of the site plan. You could review the site plan for all these improvements without ever looking at those trees, because as he even said, it's not necessary to the, to the development. So maybe for those...
But it's also nice that they didn't bifurcate, take down trees that come in, like some have done and upset the board.
Yeah, no, right, but it probably, I mean, if the board wanted to, you might ask, you know, tell them that you're not, you're not deciding on those two trees, and they would have to go to the tree preservation commission, because they're not essential to your review.
So, yeah, and I'm going to just, where you capture what I already said, is any damage that was done to the trees was done a while ago and they survived, okay? So, you know, some pruning needs to be done, some pruning has been done. But we're also going to be accessing this way and, you know, and coming around that tree for the construction access for excavation, the shooting of the dunnite for the pool, pouring of concrete for the foundations of the addition, that it could potentially, and I believe will, could further damage those trees. And when a client says to me, Craig, I'm afraid of the excuse that I've gone down, I never say no people for liability purposes. So I was quick to say, let's put it on the plan and ask for the town to accept the removal. That's how we got here today. But you mentioned the construction road, which I don't, was, I don't know, unless I missed something, it's the first time you mentioned it. Well, there's an erosion control... Oh, I see it, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's an erosion control plan LA3 that shows the construction road down there and also talks about the stockpile area. And because it's not colored, it clears, shows the area. Counsel, when it's illustrate, you know, somebody counts up the number of trees and starts out again. We're illustrating trees, they may not even be there because that...
Because you really don't want... Unless you know, next week, I see a transcript.
Lots, I mean, there's lots. There's a three-inch caliber tree, a four-inch caliber tree, another three-inch caliber tree. You know, there's several small trees here that are not understory trees that are getting a lot of shade, they don't look that great. There are trees that are there, I don't even think it needs a permit to cut them down. But we're showing them on the plan because when we give somebody else direction in the field, you know, that's within the mix, not to say, we're not cutting down 24-inch, 30-inch. So to recap, we are asking for three variances. I kind of want to get the idea of the board. One of them is substantial because our existing, and we have to do a little bit more research on whether this is, it's an existing house. I don't know if this addition was done when the house was built, but it's existing nonconforming FAR according to our calculations, the architect's calculations. Lot coverage, we know, is over, but we are calculating existing nonconforming undocumented in-town hall patios.
Okay.
So that's lot coverage, FAR, and setbacks. We can mitigate that setback, not a problem, and we'll find out where we are. The bottom line is, is it's a 20% variance, or it's almost 20%, 19.8% variance for FAR. Lot coverage is, I don't recall.
Okay, can I?
We have to check the lot coverage because of the undocumented.
Right. Right.
Let me just say something on the lot. Just so you understand, you can't get a variance for lot coverage.
I know. What we are trying to do is-
I know, I thought you knew, but-
Well, we do, and we don't. What we're trying, what we were trying-
Let me explain to the board, because this was part of the-
Legend Hall subdivision approval.
It put limits on, for each lot, it had maximum coverage, and it also had building envelopes. And everything he's proposing is within the building envelope, so that's okay. So, something could be within the building envelope, but still require a setback variance, you can't go to the zoning board for that. You could get a variance. You are, however, bound by the 4,800 lot coverage limitation that was created for this lot, this lot when it had 4,800. As you recall, I guess it was about two years ago, this came up, and there's a formula we came up with, because at the time, some things were included in lot coverage and some weren't. And that's what we need to know, is what was there in, right when it was built. And then, we'll have to figure it out. But either you fit in, either you're under that, you know, when you count the stuff that was there originally, that we didn't count as coverage then, but now we do, let's say there were retaining walls that we count now and didn't then, but if you're under 4,800, you're okay. If you're over, you got to cut that, because the zoning board can't grant a variance for it. The only way to get relief from that is to reopen the whole subdivision approval, and I don't think you might.
No, we're not looking to do that, but I'm sorry then, if I misunderstood something. I thought, or I understood it to be that, yes, we granted the 4,800 square feet, which is part of the original subdivision for this lot, for square footage of coverage. The coverage changed, so now we have to calculate walls and some small additional stuff. The patios didn't come into play, you know, are in play now, and they always were, but these patios are undocumented. My understanding was if we were at 5,000 square feet of coverage, with the walls and stuff-
Now, or when it's built?
Well, yes, and how you calculate it now. So, you take what was built then, if there were walls, now we calculate those walls that might put you over. So, let's say it's now 5,000, we're only allowed 4,800. I can work within that envelope of 40, 5,000, and maybe reduce it a little bit and be all right.
Yeah, and depending on, if it was 4,800 plus 200 of walls-
Correct.
Then the answer's yes, because the walls weren't calculated at that time. But when you're using 6,000, because you have 1,000 lips round up, because you're using 6,000 square feet of undocumented stuff, that unfortunately, he only got yesterday that information, or today that information.
When we talked.
When we talked. Okay? And that only, we only figured that out early this week.
So, what you have to do is find out, figure out what was there when it was first built and when it was first approved. And let's say 4,000 of that was house, and 1,200 of it was other stuff that we count now that we didn't count then. Then you've got 800 square feet to work with.
Right. What I have to do is to, and I stated this, or alluded to this when I began, is I got to go through the file and see, because I think there's about 600 square feet of patio that may be of question, which is a killer to what we're proposing.
It's actually every patio you took out.
It's what?
It's every patio you took out, including one of the-
Every patio? They didn't even have a walkout patio on the one side?
2,000.
You're kidding.
I'm not kidding.
Okay, so, and that's the patios I was referring to. So, I mean, what I meant by midpoint, that's the square footage of our addition. It's 100 square feet more than our addition.
Yeah. Look and see what the square footage, the coverage is without the retaining walls in the arc and the front walkway. And you're going to have two, you're going to have two covers on there. Remember, the driveway still doesn't count. Back then, that was another issue we had to talk about. But back then, they didn't count, they didn't have a FAR, so that's fair game, and that FAR wasn't regulated through the resolution, so that's fair game for variance. The pool setback being not 20 feet, but 15 feet, is fair game for variance, because the setback, oddly enough, rear is 15 feet.
Well, it's because it's within the building envelope.
It's in the building envelope, so his five-foot variance is fair game. Coverage isn't, but he's got a lot of, there's a lot of math that has to be done to see if he's really entitled to more. He's entitled to a little bit more, but it's not as much a good thing as-
I don't think it's enough.
So, this is a lowercase site plan, or, you know, a site plan to kind of look at.
Yeah, and I think we got some that I knew before I came tonight.
But however, there is just one thing, if you go to site plan, let's say that the gods all align with you. And the one aspect, at least from my perspective, is the stuff that you're talking about is really not an impact on this site, on anyone else other than the neighbor of above. Yeah, no, that's, I'm talking about the neighbors, kind of aspect. But then there is this other bigger aspect, which happens to do with, like, the next person that comes in to do this. And we've already had others that have tried to put pools in, in the circle and the square, very similar to this. But I would suggest that you're actually doing something a little bit different. You're asking for two things. Most of them just ask for the pool. If you just came in for the pool, it surely looks like to me that you could put this pool without issue, depending on all the other things. But you're also asking for something else, and, which I think is honorable, I'm into the typology of having in-law kind of things, but they're not going to last. From this board, we can't review it as if it's just for this person. It's a structure that's going to outlive even the people that own this house. So, that doesn't become part of, at least in my opinion, part of the review process. So, I think you have, you're asking for a lot, and you don't have a lot, and then now you have to figure out the math.
I have another question. This is a small point, but it may impact the location of the pool versus the house. You have an aluminum fence around the pool, but I may not have noticed it, I mean, that would keep people wandering the property from falling in, but I didn't see anything preventing someone walking out the back door and falling in.
That's correct.
And I don't know about this village, but there are towns that require complete encirclement to protect a child from walking out the door.
The National Building Code requires those doors to be alarmed, and you can use the backside of the structure, as long as those doors are alarmed. I don't even believe, in the National Building Code, there's no distance that it has to be off-
I said some towns. I know the town of Southampton requires complete encirclement.
Well, in this town and the neighboring towns, it's not a requirement. The National Building Code is not a requirement. This town requires a taller fence than normal, and that's what we're proposing. In Scarsdale, a neighboring town, they require the same height as pervious ten, but also a closer spacing.
It wouldn't be the first time a child wandered out the back door and fell in the pool.
I understand, but it's in the board's, in the regulations.
How close, did you say, is the nearest house to where the pool is located?
I would say it's the Gellmans. And they also have a pool that they can come out their, they have a similar house, they come out their front porch, I mean, their rear porch, and come down the stairs, and they have two faces of lockout into their pool area.
And then they, the property to the bottom, I guess, how close is that house?
That's further away than Mr. Semenides's house. That house is way up high on the hill, and it looks like-
Up down?
Yeah.
Is that the Goldsmith's?
Yes. But I don't believe it's Goldsmith.
No, it isn't. There's no Goldsmiths anymore, but that's their house.
Correct. I will bring a satellite photo of that area, you know, so you'll see it, and try to map out. But the closest one is here.
I think you should also, if you get past the math part, is to come back with similar projects in this development that have done almost exactly what you're doing, so you can get an understanding of the bulk and size and stuff like that.
But that's two?
I'm sure it's easy.
It's not hard.
Yeah.
Next three. The pool hanging off the cliff, yeah, sitting on it at ledge.
I'm familiar with several of the pools in there, but I'm not familiar with the FAR and the bulk of the houses.
What kind of pool filters do you have? Backwash order?
No. It'll be either a diatomaceous earth filter, which is, has a self-contained unit, and/or, and this is all in our notes, our specifications, and it might, we might have changed it to require a cartridge filter. The backflow, I think it's in the notes as well, is in the bill of ownership unless it's changed since our last pool, for the drawdown period of the pool. It says you got to pump it and go into the stormwater system and the public stormwater system for the drawdown. When we were doing the-
I assume you put a note in the thing that they have to hold it for 10 days.
Yes, and, well, I'm not sure if they would set the date a number of times, but we did go to the toxicological department, I'm not sure if you were on the board then, but I know that Patrick Gilmore, I think it was this gentleman's name, was the chair at the time for the pond, because a lot of people started to ask for swimming pools. And we went to the New York State Toxicological Department, and we got a report from them. Basically, it said that a few discharged chlorine water from the swimming pool on the lawn, and as it ran off 100 feet, by the time you got to 100 feet, the chlorine, being such a volatile chemical, would break down and there would be notice.
And then you can put a new lawn in, too.
Well, exactly, but we're not proposing that, because there's no light to put a lawn in here with the number of trees. But we chucked it out to winter drawdown period, I will double check to see if we said anything about the time frame.
If you hold it 10 days, the chlorine will dissipate before you discharge.
Okay. I'm just saying, I don't know if I put that in enough, I don't think, but we will make a note of it.
Getting back to those two trees, I'm stuck with that. I would like to see a report on those two trees and see what condition they're in. If they're in good condition, can they just be pruned back or something to give the-
Are we going to keep the two trees in our process?
I would like to, because it's, I think, it's part of the site plan. It's part of, what they're proposing to do is part of this project.
We should get a special review by the ECD or-
Yeah, we can send it to them, too.
We'll get an arborist.
When you say a special review, I mean, I'll look at it and see.
Not enough, I assert.
We need somebody, yeah.
A licensed arborist.
Yeah, we'll get an arborist to look at it.
Pardon me?
We have to get through the math first.
Yes, I think the next, not answers-
Why don't you do that first?
I'm assuming that the next time we come before the site plan will be a little different. I don't think that the trees or the requests for removing those trees will be any different. We'll come back with the report.
Okay.
How we care, and I don't need to point at you, sorry. How we care for the, or propose the drawdown, drawdown period of the pool will be more specific on the timeframe before we discharge that water. I do want to say, you know, the concern is the environment. And going back to our statement that we're reducing the existing impervious, so be it that some of that is undocumented, we're still proposing stormwater intention in light of, still the reduction. The nature of the swimming pool is in itself a holding, you know, facility for stormwater for the first six inches. So, in any case, as far as the stormwater runoff, we're only improving the situation. And a stormwater report has been submitted. So-
Thank you.
Just one small correction, so it's writing the record, you lot 34 on the subject, you had indicated 36, it's 34. Yeah, so it's 34, because it is relevant, because we have to go back and look at that lot on the subject.
I'll probably make that mistake again. All right, thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the trees also, and the access. You had said that because of the construction of the swimming pool, you could, you might impact the trees. But I think on all the proposals that we look at, we always look at access to heavy equipment and construction and protection, tree protection, plus any protection for the roots, you know, like plywood or whatever is necessary to protect those trees.
Right, we do propose tree protection, we do show a riprap, you know, we call it, what do we call it, anti-tracking pavement on the driveway. We could, and we've done this many times, specify a lot of mulch, you know, wood chips, shredded mulch wood chips. So, the tree protection will be proposed regardless of those trees, if they come out or not. If they come out, we're not worried about protecting them, obviously, but there are other trees that need protection, so we'll make sure that we have something.
Also, are you still proposing to take out a wall that extends on to the neighbor's property?
Oh, yeah, that will be addressed, and I'm not sure how it's going to be addressed. Lack of a better expression, perception's reality. At one time, the previous owner built a little retaining wall here, that's really only about a foot and a half high, maybe two feet at the most, but I think it's only a foot and a half high, of railroad timbers, and they had, well, they got a, they had a trampoline or a playset here, and it's mulch or remnants of a mulch area. We are proposing to remove that. We have not talked to the neighbor. You know, we wanted to see where we're going. We have not talked to the neighbor. I don't think my client has talked to that neighbor, has talked to the other neighbors. You know, I guess it wouldn't be fair to say what, you know, the neighbor felt. But I will tell you, when we did Gellmans, it was a similar project.
Like I said, as you move ahead, it turns out you're going to proceed with all this, then you'll have to-
I think we have to make modifications to the building envelope, and, not the building envelope, the structure, to try to pull it in, suck it into the, on the roof. I still believe we'll probably come back and ask for the FAR variance, but I think that will help us with lot coverage, and it'll also help us with, you know, the FAR a little bit will be reduced. I can't answer how we're coming back, but we'll be back. Okay. Now, the question is, it may be premature, but I think we have to rework the plan before we make an application to the ZBET, the next process. I'm going to interpret what I'm hearing, what I heard tonight, is that you want us, we have to reduce the coverage. You're not opposed necessarily to the FAR, but as we revise this to accommodate the coverage and make this house so it works for the future inhabitants of the house, that it's reasonable, you know, that the FAR variance is there, we've worked on the coverage, and then if we sneak that pool in a little bit to reduce that variance. You have no objection for us going and asking for the two variances?
That's moving a little too fast. Let's see what you come back with, and then the board will rule on that. Hypotheticals don't work.
In addition to which, the zoning board doesn't want to consider applications for variances that are going to subsequently require site plan approval. It's one thing if it's a threshold variance, like, you know, has the variance expired or something like that, but, but the things that have gone for variances and then come back to the planning board, the zoning board just doesn't decide on it, because they might change. And they also want the board trustees input, I mean, the planning board's input on it.
Right. Then my question is, is I should come back here before I make an application? Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have the numbers that you need a variance for. We don't know.
Right. Yeah, numbers they just-
Did you get Lucille, did you get the landscape architect?
I did, I got it. Any other questions? I think that's it.
Would it be helpful to have it?
No, I already have it in the file. Thank you.
Oh, the other one, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other one.
The actual-
The other one?
The other one?
Capital.
I think we have to start discussing, because we need to get comments to the board trustees. I want to make sure that we're on record.
Yes, the 15th, right?
I sent my, my report around to you, because I saw that we issued, or that were, the request that was right to make, changes to zoning coordinates.
At least in Chilwell.
In terms of text amendments for, in essence, a real variance from the ordinance, is that they would not be subject to resource protection, they would waive the height requirements and the matter of determination of the height.
I'm assuming you don't need, you don't need much.
I don't, I don't think so, Mary, I don't.
I would just like to ask you a question.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, there's any procedural stuff, yeah, I don't care, yeah.
Is, I would like to know what's the aspects of whatever we're sending by next Friday-
So we can, even anything that other people have mentioned, we're allowed to include?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any comments you have on the DEIS, and they're going to have to respond to them. Let's say you raise a comment that somebody, you know, one of the other consultants or somebody from the public raised, then they'll say, see answer to this, you know, but yeah, yeah, don't worry about the issue.
They only have to answer it if it's in a form of a question.
Pardon?
Only have to answer questions. If it's a statement, they can say, so noted.
Well, what you would probably, probably the better way, you know, let's say you think, we think it's too big. Well, how do they respond? What you should see, the way I do it, I frame it so that it demands an answer, like...
Right, that in the question, with a question mark.
Show us a small, show us what would happen if it were only 100 units, whatever. So put it, put it that way.
You could have a narrative and at the end say, and the question is, because if you just have a narrative, I've seen it before, thank you, so...
Just say, comment noted.
Yeah, comment noted, thank you.
But you don't want, you don't want, you don't want the question raised so that somebody can just answer, comment noted. You actually want...
You have to, you need an answer. You've got to be a question. I mean, this is very procedural, but it's basic procedure.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
So then I'll ask Mark, because he's here. Did the board of trustees go through a study with this applicant on different scale issues, i.e. different size of what they're proposing? Was any of that reviewed or discussed or shown?
No, the, one of the issues that we have...
Oh, Mark, sorry.
I apologize. What we've talked about from the very beginning, from when we first did a site walk with our, and saw the size of the building is that, you know, we're looking for them to come back with a reduction in the, you know, the frontal mass and the bulk of the building. But...
And that never happened, they never...
They haven't done that yet. They know very clearly that has to be done. So we haven't addressed reducing yet the number of units because we're still in the process of trying to figure out the impact of the current number of units.
Mark, George, I, you came in a little late and I explained it, how this process is different from...
Wait a second, I was here on time. I want to get some credit.
I think I could note that everybody was here, but I said, no, no, but we were talking and chatting about it a little before because Hillary was saying, well, how come in continuum, we were, you know, looking at it, you know, continual, sorry, but that's because they kept coming back with changes. Now...
Because we, as...
But this is not how, procedurally, that was not the correct way to go through DEIS. It's the way it was done, it was fine. And that's, they chose to respond to that, hoping that they would get to a point that it was acceptable so that the final EIS would be acceptable. This is, they, this plan is the same plan that you guys saw in March, it hasn't changed. So, and that's really how it's supposed to be. So you're not writing an environmental impact statement on a moving target, which is what we were doing in continuum, making it very difficult. So this target was pretty much fixed in March, the one that you came to. Short, you know, in the month after that, came up with the scoping outline that, you know, you gave your input to. And then really since then, they've been working on the draft environmental impact statement, and that's what came in November. It hasn't, it hasn't...
So the design hasn't changed? That was why the question was, I was curious because of our experience where they did constantly change it.
No.
For this, they didn't.
Well, that's not true. The design did change.
Yeah, but early on, it was before March.
The, the style of the building...
I apologize.
Oh, sorry. I mean, they changed the, the one major change that happened, but not in terms of the size of the building really, was that they more or less inverted the building. There was a front portico entrance.
Right.
And they flipped it inside with, so you came through into an interior courtyard.
But that's what, that's what you guys saw in March, and that's the one, that's the plan that the DEIS is on.
So that answers a lot because then there is no reason for us to see them again. If it's the same plan that was done, then nothing's evolved.
Exactly. And this is how the process usually goes. And then I'm, you know, there's been a lot of comments, there've been a lot of comments from the consultants, there've been a lot of comments from the public, the planning board, I'm putting together a memo from the board of trustees and has tons of comments that it's best, so the fact, I mean, you'll have some too, they may overlap, that's fine.
So is everyone doing all these comments within 10 days?
Well, since November, yeah. Yeah, well, I'll have them, I'll have them by, we got, we got quite a few of them already. We got the fire consultant, we got Hans, we got the traffic, traffic people.
And you're converting them all to questions?
No. Yeah, we still, we have a planning consultant, we haven't got theirs yet, but it's not 10 days, it was, everybody started in November when we got them.
I can't get past the mass of the facade. There was a question asked from the, from the public about the height from Broadway and they never really answered it. They said, oh, it's going to be 48 feet high. But I looked through the DEIS and, and there was a topo there that Broadway is about 100 feet and the top of the building is 200 feet. From Broadway, you look up, it's going to be 100 feet higher.
Well, the truth is, forget, forget the stuff on top, forget the stuff on...
Right, and I'm forgetting the stuff on top.
But, but the roof line isn't any higher than the roof line of the current building.
Yeah, but it's a lot closer.
It's closer.
It's somewhere closer, yes. But height wise, right. But it's, it's about, it's about 100 feet closer.
260 feet.
I think it's about 100, 100 feet closer to Broadway.
It's significantly closer and the grade is lower.
The white building...
So therefore, the mass is bigger.
Is this a big, a big facade on Broadway? I can't get past that.
Well, so then the comment would be, show us the building or what would, what, how would, how would your...
How does the massive facade fit in with the nature of the village?
Well, no. You don't want to, but Caesar, you don't want to ask a question like that.
Well, I just gave a two second, nanosecond version.
Because they'll come up with something. What you want to say is, show, show us what it would look like if there were, what, how the building could be configured if it were only, how wide is it?
It's 260 feet wide.
If it were 150 feet or only twice as big as the building there now, or whatever, whatever you come up with. And then there would, I think, be more constructive, and they may come back and say, if we do it, it won't work or something, but you don't, you don't want them telling you how it fits in, you know how it fits in.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
That's, that's...
Right.
This building is even larger than the continuum is.
Close to the Broadway, at least continuum is up to...
Right, but it also was... Let's not go, let's say away from continuum, that's gone. We're dealing with this building. But this building, I totaled it up, you're coming up with 2,209,000 cubic feet of volume within the building. That is seven times the size of the white building that's up there now, okay, for comparison's sake. The walls at the back of that building range from one foot high to over 30 feet high. Okay, so you have walls that are going to be hot, actually in the back, they look like they will be higher than the building. So, because the building is only two stories at the back and these walls are going to be over 30. And they, they sort of come up like this. So at the highest point, they're like 30.
I'm missing the point about these walls.
There's a series of retaining walls. Because they have to, all right, they're taking out 50,000 cubic yards to create a shelf or a plateau, okay? So now they're...
Are you talking about walls of the building?
No, no, no. So, I'm sorry, so they're creating a series of retaining walls, there are actually three or four retaining walls that step back about eight feet, but if you put them, or when you, when you're looking at them, they're stepping back like this so that you're, they're over 30 feet in height.
Now, he's got it here.
I have the full, full size that, which is a little...
And right now, there's this grass that goes down.
It's hillside and grass, right, right. So, I mean, those are something, also, the building is going to be set back 300 feet from Broadway as opposed to 420 feet, which is where the white building is now.
Right, and there's something, isn't there something in the, their zoning language that for each...
Yes, they, they want, they want to be given each...
Well, that's how they get to the 48 feet. So the height would still be 35 feet, but for each 50 feet back, you could get a five foot bonus, you know?
I think we should take, that could be removed.
Because they're, because they're not going to the buffer line, they're getting an additional height, right?
But you know, when they do it that way, then they'd say the maximum height could be 48 feet. The truth is they want whatever number of feet, 48 feet plus.
Right, that's how they're getting there.
Yes.
I think also, what is probably pretty obvious is they, they need a variance or an exception for resource protection because that site is so steep that they have to cut into it. They would have to alter the environmental features of that site to be able to make the building work. So rather than working with the land, they are making the land work for their building. That's what's happening.
Well, I just want to say, there is one trade off that I thought was worthwhile considering. The only benefit of what they're doing, I mean, the major benefit environmentally, I think, is that because of what they're doing with that rear platform, they're creating indoor parking in the rear, so, up the building. So 16 parking spaces there that are not exposed out on the property. And they're essentially keeping the close, but not quite, the close, the existing driveway and lower parking lot area is slightly expanded. But basically, that was a major change from where they first came in, where there was like 140 parking spots scattered around the outside of the building.
But didn't, weren't, didn't at the beginning, they had parking spaces underground? Didn't they do that?
Well, they sort of, they are now underground. The first floor at the back of the building is parked.
Yeah, no, but no, Hillary was just saying, there were some underground in the beginning, but not as much.
Right, because we were talking about excavation and how much parking underground was...
Yeah, they came up because we were measuring the height, there was some.
So they changed that.
The other thing is that they significantly changed the grading requirement when they turned the entry into the inside of the building rather than having the outside portico.
Right.
I remember when we first did the site, we did a site walk around down where the existing parking lot is now, like near to Broadway, that outdoor parking lot. I looked at, they happened to have a grading plan that they had with us, with them when they were walking around. There was going to be between five and eight foot more soil in that, in that location than was there now, just because of the way they had, were doing the re-rating. So it's like, they ended up, if you could believe it, it sounds like they ended up reducing grading significantly, at least along that front slope.
Well, because they're taking all that stuff back.
If you look at their grading plan, their excavation plan, when they're excavating a major portion of the site, to get it down to a...
Quite a few truck loads.
Well, you got 50,000 cubic yards, which is 1,350,000 cubic feet.
Of rock.
Which...
With all that excavation, is that going to expose rocks or is this going to be a ledge that goes across a lot of property and possibly other properties too?
Well, also, that's an interesting point because those coltech units, they got to end up being, sitting in rock.
Yeah, well, I, that was my, one of three comments. It's a huge roof, a lot of water and a lot of rock, and I don't agree that it's going to be kept on site. And the drainage pipes in Route 9 are presently probably undersized and it may result in flooding on Route 9. Because I just don't think the water from that big roof is going to be handled by those things in rock.
Yeah, they don't have soil testing in the area where the stormwater is and we have a ton of...
But that's a lot of roof.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a huge area for all those stormwaters.
They also have the stormwater coltex in the road, which might be an issue with the weight of the fire trucks and the requirements in the state code for that.
Well, it's also a problem for sitting on rock.
Yeah.
Do you need, do you need us, because you can just come up with your comments. Yeah, the only thing to be aware is, you know, there seems to be some misunderstanding and Mark can back me up on this. The board of trustees is not close to approving anything. They have, and they made it very clear, I think a couple of you were at the, this past public hearing, but at the December public hearing, the board members made, several of the board members made it clear to the developer that they considered this way too big, so, so, so you don't worry.
One thing I want to tell you is that...
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, 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 because I, you know, I know the majority of us have been saying it's just a question about, you know, how much reduction...
What they'll commit.
What they commit, what is going to remain a business for them, right? It could be that it just is the property is too expensive, underlying property is too expensive and therefore they are trying to get so much into it. But what I was going to say was they, they did show us a comparison of their proposed building for Irvington with the Terrytown building. So if you know the Terrytown building now, if you go up there, it's kind of like this and then it has a wing where the entry is, the wing goes back a little bit. But if you were to try to just take where that wing comes back to look that edge and this edge and it's kind of come out, straight out and take a linear distance, it's about 20 feet longer than the proposed building in Irvington. So, and the height of the building in Terrytown is about 11 feet higher because of the sloped roof and so forth and the way the roof is, even though it's, looks like it's only three stories, it's actually a higher building. But anyways, the point I'm trying to get is, it's very, you know, okay, 20 feet on one end, 11 feet lower, but it's going to have that same presence of scale. It's a much narrower building, right? It doesn't have the, the back quadrant or the back section that the Irvington...
One of the things you should be very careful about when people use comparisons like that, they use them in kind of abstract ways. This is not the same site.
No, I'm not even talking about how it was on the site.
And it's not even the same village. And that's been used before on other applications.
That's not my point to you guys. My point is there's a physical building that actually represents the size of this, close to the size of the structure they're proposing.
How many, how many beds does that have?
90.
And they're proposing, I believe, 15 occupied.
No, not 150 beds, 50 units.
So, so 90 beds?
I think it's 90 units.
90 units.
I think it's 90 units.
But they supposedly are 35 percent, something like 35 percent occupied since they opened.
Right, but you also look in that, that area and that's a commercial corridor.
I'm not, I'm just saying, you're also looking at from a road that's six or seven lanes wide. You have, you have hotel...
No, Mark was just making this nice for Terrytown.
I'm not making any value to that statement, I'm just saying that that's the kind of size we're going to have.
When someone says something, no, I appreciate what you're saying, but when, when that kind of analogy, which is typically done by an applicant, is done, it has to be by people on boards like this, kind of realize that it isn't apples to apples, okay? And that's, I'm not trying to kill the messenger, but I'm...
No, I mean, it's totally different and they, you know, but like I have asked them before, I said, well, how many Trent buildings is this? How many main school, new street school buildings is this really? And they haven't come back, so I guess I'm going to have to Google Maps and...
Have to answer that, I think.
Well, also, as long as you...
Specifically do.
We're not telling them.
As long as you brought up access to the Terrytown development, that fire trucks do not have access. I just want to know on this building, this current proposal, how, have they checked the fire truck being able to get around?
A fire, a fire review to go on.
Yeah, no, we have a fire consultant looked at it and also included comments.
Consultant has looked at it and there are quite a bit of issues with access to the state code at this point and existing equipment titles.
So that's a set of questions, right?
So the fire department, my, my main things are IVAC. IVAC is short staff now. I know they're trying to get a deal with Empress, and I don't know if they have that or not.
For Main Street schools.
I don't know what the size of Main Street school is.
And every time there's a nine-one-one call, the police department has to respond. So there's a security issue that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, that should all come in your feedback. Those are all appropriate questions. I mean, you know, they propose Empress, and that's fine. But what, they even say in their own analysis that there's a certain number of times that Empress won't be available, so it's called through to.
I would like, I would like to know when and if they spoke to Empress.
What, another municipal graph is on?
You know, they have. You might want to read that part of.
Could be Irvington.
Can I just want, while the DEIS looks really monumental, almost everything is covered in the executive summary in the beginning. And if you read the executive, if you read the executive summary.
Yeah, what we should do is we should just all go through this and say, okay, someone, you pick this, you do this, you do that, and they kind of.
Yeah, but if you go through the executive summary without having to go through the rest of it, unless there's a particular issue, like maybe if you want more detail on something, then you can go back to the emergency services thing or something like that. But it's not, where is darting? I mean, Julie, I've written this thing so many times, it's not quite as daunting as it looks.
Some friends have asked, mine have some. What, is it going to be narrow enough, this is way down the road, but we should be narrow enough that suddenly thirty percent occupancy and the new building just doesn't take off, they have occupancy problems, and it becomes an apartment building. They say, oh, we're not doing that anymore, we're going to rent a.
It can be because the special permit is only for, as I understand, the special permit is only for.
Well, it's either apartment house or an empty building.
It's not, right.
They'd have to come in for a new special permit.
For zoning change. No, they have to come in for zoning change because multifamily isn't allowed. It's a fair issue, though.
Somebody raised that.
And then you've got that big building there. It's a perfectly good, perfectly good question.
Someone raised that on Monday, they talked about what happens.
That was the very first issue I raised when we met with the planner, you know, how the planner would address it.
The answer isn't that we won't give it to them, because then you have an empty building, now what?
Right, what do you do?
No, what will happen is it will become, they'll say it's a hardship and don't get it to be fully fitted. That's what's going to happen.
Again, that doesn't give them, they still have to go through the process to get the zoning or the. Yeah, but my point is, okay, you won't give us that zoning to put it, and it's an empty building. See you later, have fun. But it may be no other choice because if a hundred, if you're looking at a hundred, it won't be, let's say there's a hundred and fifty units, and let's say you go, it becomes seventy-five apartments because you know the institution.
Double a month.
You know, and so whatever the number, say seventy-five, and at that point, you're talking about, you're still having to look at what's the impact in terms of, you know, the sewer systems, the utilities, the school system, everything. I mean, you'd have to do that analysis all over again.
Can I just say something, and this is something for anybody who was at the meeting the other night, because I explained to the public, the purpose of this meeting is not to answer questions, it's to raise questions. So these are good questions you're answering, and you ask me, put them in your memo, and then they'll be answered in the DEIS.
Good night.
Goodbye.
That's it.
Come, no, don't send us a comment notice.
I used to be involved in some of those things. Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
We have to, we have to, questions, not comments, yes.
Well, I think you can make a comment, and then from that comment say, so how do you plan on addressing this?
So have they conformed to code up till now?
No. No, I don't.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. No. Ed, how is height determined?
Height is lowest point to the highest point.
Of the land as it exists and exists.
Existing grade. So you're going to probably want to ask for a pencil line draw showing the code compliance building on that lot. It's probably one of the questions you're going to ask. And then if you really want to ask, ask if you're code compliant in the business district. And that would be two good questions you would ask, pencil line over the existing elevations.
Now, why in the business district?
Because it's a business building, and you want to see the difference. It's thirty-five, forty-two, and forty-two, so it's going to be forty-two anyway. Remember, they're allowed forty-two feet height on a sloping lot if the building envelope is over fifteen percent. I believe it is, the existing building envelope. So it's probably going to be forty-two feet either way. So, and that's from the existing grade or the proposed grade, which is lower. So there's a six-foot problem right there, so that's a pencil line issue. Okay, so you can ask to see that.
Basically asking for what, an hazard right?
You've done this before.
Right.
Yeah. At Continuum, you ask for an hazard right building, and after six months, I think you got one.
No.
I think it was sixteen months.
They believed.
I mean, we can go about it a couple of different ways. I would suggest then, perhaps, if you all have comments, is to jot them down, and let's put them all together. And then if you want, I will take them all and combine them into a memo. Yeah, welcome onto a memo that asks questions. I mean, I went back and pulled out my memo from Continuum, and I can take a lot of this stuff from Continuum.
And all I got to do is just change numbers.
Remember, you guys, how it made us to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, and then, and ask the same types of questions, great same types of issues. Because number one, I still have an issue. I do not believe that this is inconsistent with the master plan. I don't know how they come up with that, but I can point to several, two places in the code, in the comprehensive plan where it talks about this site. And really, the comprehensive plan says that basically what's there now is what's going to continue to be there. It doesn't make any recommendation or any proposal for any type of use like this on the site. So I think if I were the village, if I were the mayor and the board of trustees, I'd say, you know, we really, if we're going to do this, we need to adopt something or amend the comprehensive plan to include this. Because you want to cover yourselves in case somebody raises an issue or brings in Article Seventy-eight, that this is not in accordance with the master plan, because I don't think it is. So that would be my first issue. The other thing is the resource protection. I think that could set a bad precedent by allowing this development to not conform to resource protection, when the whole idea of resource protection is to maintain the character and the environmental characteristics of this village. And what they're doing here is basically just totally changing the environmental characteristics of that site. It is creating, taking major hillsides and just leveling it and creating shelves so they can build the building out of here.
Which is very similar to what was at Continuum, and was also discussed at that time, was, you know, the other sites that are still available in this town. This will have blowback for all of those.
Well, I think what's coming up, what was suggested at one of the public hearings, and what I suggested two years ago with Continuum too, is the village really ought to take a look at the four or five properties in this village, at least four or five, that are, have a major development potential, and see what really should be done with that way and look ahead. And this is one of them. Continuum was one of them at the time. Still, Nevis Labs, I mean, they have two acres on it, but is that realistic? Waterfront, and I forget what it has, the fifth one, but there are like four or five sites that really need to be looked at, at least. Maybe there are more, and other people may have ideas that there are more that should be looked at.
The eating place, that's a big part that doesn't necessarily, that's a big part of the way.
Abbott House.
Well, that Abbott House was the other one, thank you, that was the one, right.
So does it make sense for, I mean, basically, we're here to, as Marian said, not to comment, but to ask questions.
Well, as I said, I would comment and then ask a question based on that comment.
Correct.
This building is two million cubic feet. How is that consistent with the small-town character of the village?
In comprehensive plan, item number seven, page two, which we did for Continuum. Here's the statement on the comprehensive plan. Explain how you.
So I said, so you go back and.
My guess is.
Yeah, I could.
Changing some things around.
That is impossible for multiple buildings instead of one big Pentagon, you know.
They need, well, they'll tell you they need it because of the way their operation works, that it's more efficient that they have one building, that all people are inside then, because.
I'm still going back to the safety issue.
Well, that's, that's.
The fire department, can a truck get around there? If they're, can the truck get into the building so that they can fight a fire on the inside of the courtyard?
Were those questions raised there by the fire department or by you?
Both, mine are incorporated in the fire department's memo. And you can see that the fire truck access is not, is limited in not meeting the code to the service level, service entrance. The grade exceeds the twelve percent allowable by state code. They're using a lot of exceptions and taking liberties ahead of time that the code enforcement officer has allowed these exceptions that he's offered in the code without giving any additional, any true additional fire safety mechanisms. The ladder truck has to be able to reach the building at certain points, it can't. The ladder truck can't make the turn into the courtyard. Courtyard roof is too low, coltex in the driveway, drainage system is not designed at this point, most likely will not meet the level requirement of a fire truck driving over it. I know it's something wrong, but that's dumb. I care that the fire truck gets something. And those are just, you've got to remember, this is all done based on a schematic and DEIS. There's no engineering drawings to really fine-tune this stuff. But I mean, they're.
They're not going to get to that level at this point.
Yeah, but these issues were sent to the consulting or AKRF, I think, March or April. So it's not like they've been hidden from anybody, and that's the place that we're having it at. So whether they got them or not, I don't know.
I still think we can raise them.
I think you should. I'll send you a memo, I'll send you my memo, and I'll send you their memo. And you can see, and you can use them as you wish. And then the other problem is we have a mutually Terrytown ladder that can't make any of those turns. It can't make the dip in the road. It's, that's the responding piece of equipment, aerial equipment.
Wasn't there also another piece on the north side where they said it didn't have to be, it was like from back to the partial side?
Doesn't have to be connected and the grade, there's an exception in the grades that we would give them, that they built, the code official, the code, whatever they call it, the building code. I have the ability to weigh that as long as it's going to be reached with a hose, and that can't be it. But you have the whole service wing that can't get over the traditional fire truck up there because of the X terms in it. And that's where I would say sixty percent of the calls are going to have to go to. So that was disappointing, the grades in general are still too stable. And yes, they're less than what's there, but the building is more, it's going to be more reliant on emergency services than the existing building, and therefore, they're going to be saying, well, the existing rodent is better than the existing rodent, and that's going to be their answer. But then we have to come back and say, yeah, but the use is a hundred times more sensitive to the needs of an emergency vehicle. The fundamental problem that we can't find a code against right now, a code that addresses it right now, is the courtyard. I know some of the trustees are lucky with it, but how you evacuate and fight the fire, get the fire truck in there when everyone's going out that same route. And I don't think fire trucks are going to drive under a building if it's on fire. So that has yet to be even addressed, other than the fire truck can't go underneath that opening.
When everybody's trying to get out.
State code is thirteen-six. Yeah, there isn't a height off of a manufacturer specification of twelve feet, but our truck is twelve and four. Yeah, it's got modifications on it.
Is this the new truck or is this the old truck?
This is, well, we don't have any new trucks. We have a ladder truck.
There was a truck that paid for twice.
That one, that's the one I'm talking.
No, no, we pay the taxi. It's there still. And the insurance company, they go, so it'll work out.
Well, we're just trying to identify.
No, but listen, let's go through the, let's go through the big items here that I saw.
No, I mean, I have a fundamental issue with the lack of effort made. So I think one of the questions you could simply ask is, show us compliance with the New York State Building Code as the New York State Building Code is written today. There are new building codes coming out that were supposed to come out this year that may come out by the middle of this year. But that's not the argument we're having. We want, you want to show a compliant project that meets the building code, the fire access code for today, the two thousand and ten building.
But you'll be bringing this up in your memo, right?
It's already brought up, but you should bring it up again.
There's nothing wrong with repeating it.
You should repeat it in a question, we repeated it in a statement.
Okay.
I wrote down.
I'll send you, I'll send you, I'll send you both under and some of the draft under.
We have like the big stuff, which is the atmospheric things, like resource protection, zoning, which we didn't really discuss per se. No, no, those are like the generic things. Then you get into the bulk and the mass, the building of it, okay? Then you get into the construction of it, you know, what the impacts of doing this will be.
During the construction.
During construction, okay? Then you get into the, like we said, about the drainage and rocks and stuff like that and all that kind of business. Then you get into the safety concerns that are, and then finally, it gets into the kind of the drain, the services that are of the village.
You might want to.
Is there any other thing that we missed?
You might want to ask in context of the building of this, how much of the material coming out has to be blasted or hammered out? That's going to be a large impact on the neighborhood, okay? I know there's boring holes, and I think they think it's better than I think it is. But, you know, if you see rock up top, there should be rock down below. But I think you should ask a question, how much of it is rock? And is there removal at a blasting or hammering? That's an impact on the neighborhood that should be identified.
Yeah, from noise and then.
Not on damage to the property.
It was part of your comments.
It's a planning issue, it's not a, I have a code that says they have to follow this procedure to get a blasting permit. I don't have the ability to ask a question of how you're going to do something until the apply for.
Somebody asked that question, and the answer was, we don't know, because it might be loose rock that can be done with an excavator.
Yeah, and I've asked it in Irvington for twenty-five years. I can tell you right now that after the first three feet, it's not coming out. But they have boring holes, I know they have boring holes, and it should be asked. Blasting is not going to go easy on old plaster buildings that are to the north of this property.
There was a development that impacted some houses on Riverview Road. When things were blasted, they had some cracks in the foundation.
They did, they were all.
Wrong found it?
Yeah, we have a very rigorous impressive blasting requirement, six hundred for like pre-blast service, licensed engineers, notices, public notices, two visits. It's not going to be cheap to blast it. Maybe bringing it to their attention will help them.
Broken windows, walls.
Well, you know, broken windows are broke.
And they're denying it, because they didn't have, the owners of the houses.
No, no, yeah, but that's, that's pre-two thousand. Since two thousand, we've asked for pre-blast service.
No, not here, the one, I'm talking to the one in the.
The bright view. But what's interesting is a lot of communities are copying our blasting ordinance now. And our.
Our village or our town?
I'm sorry, our village. Says town in front of the building now.
I know.
Okay, just make sure, yeah. So you understand why I'm confused?
I don't get confused.
Oh, you don't?
No.
You walk.
There are still some people who don't know the difference between a village and a.
Well, how could you, when it says town, you can walk into the town hall.
And a hamlet.
Well, we're walking into town hall. Sexy, I don't when I walk in the door.
It's those town villages like Bronxville that have co-terminals.
So how should we proceed? That's a fair statement.
Well, what I would suggest is each of you get me your comments, circulate to everybody on the board, and let's see what we have in terms of comments or questions or issues that we have. If we can do that in the next couple of days, then I can, over the weekend, start to put it together as a memo or as a series of, no, as a memo, but a memo of statements and then questions based on those statements. And then I'll circulate, try and get it done and circulate it to everybody, like say, by mid next week, so that you can all comment on anything that I missed or any changes you want, and then we can finalize and get it back to them by next Friday.
I'm only going to add that conversion to apartments to the three I already gave.
Fine, but just down and circulate it to everybody on board. We'll take it from there.
Just as an aside story, this nine-one-one, they said they're going to have a call bell and a string to pull and their phones for nine-one-one. Now, if I were a patient and I had my phone next to me, I would call nine-one-one. And who's going to respond? Nine-one-one comes into here.
That's what they said, that they had a lot of issues with in other places where residents' family were there and something happened. And the family, the first thing that they do is they kick up their phone and they call nine-one-one. And that was, that was more of an issue because what do you do?
So is this a continuum of care or is this a nursing home?
I don't understand, it's independent, it's independent living and assisted living.
Well, assisted and dementia, it's nursing care. It's not.
Assisted living is, no, no, it's not, there's a difference. Nursing home is different than assisted living.
Okay, but assisted living, you still need a certified.
You need some help to do certain things, but you still have mobility.
But then you have the dementia unit, that's.
Well, those folks are supposed to be contained. Right, but then, most of the units are actually independent living units.
Right, that's the whole scam, well, that's the process with that. Right, that's, that's the whole scam, well, that's the process with this, is that you go in there happy, and, and that's why they, they like to call them the continuum of care, places where they, they go from independent living to assisted living, to then...
If you can afford it, if you can afford the money, it's big.
You know, nursing care.
Because if you can't afford it, you're not there anymore.
Right, in thirty days.
Yeah.
But they all have little buttons that someone's supposed to come, if you fall, something like that, you're supposed to, you have it on your, and they're supposed to come within a certain amount of time. Not someone who is there, they're not necessarily, they're just people that are there, it's not nurses or anything like that.
I think they said, I thought it said there's a nurse on twenty-four hours.
What if she gets sick?
What if she causes it sick that day?
We have that backup. I mean, I think those are the operational, I don't want to get into that, I just, I want to stay with the environmental stuff here.
No, no, but what that does is, it's just like Continuum, it does impact the services, which is what Jill was talking about, is that, that's where it gets into concern, because if there's only one nurse there, and there's six people that fall and hurt themselves, it's putting a drain on two, on such two. Yeah, whatever, the second call is, is, is a village service. Well, the first call might be a village service, too. Correct. So, that's the, so it is a big, it is a, as, it's important.
But what's the experience, though, the real experience of places like Woodlands, and there's the Hebrew Hall Lot on Grasslands Road?
Cabrini, down the park.
Cabrini's a nursing home.
I know, but you could...
That's different, though. Well, that's, that's very different.
I don't think that, you know, my mother was there seven years, I don't remember, I was there three times a week, and I don't remember too many ambulance coming.
For Adrian, especially on...
No, but those, no, to Cabrini.
Well, they have on, on-site nursing that would be taken care of.
They have more care there, because it's a nursing home, so you have to have more staff around. Yeah, yeah, but this is, and again, this is independent living, so these, these people are able to take care of themselves, supposed to be able to...
Did you, did you hear the age bracket of the independent living? They're in their eighties, they said.
That's the average, is eighty-three.
That's, that's not like us, that walk around independent living.
Unfortunately, there's some people in ninety who are still driving out there, very dangerous.
And that's, that's a huge find, that there's going to be a couple of them who are going to come down that hill, where I ought to drive by.
Well, that's not coming down the hill right on the road, there, there's no, there's no pedestrian access to that site for either employees, or even for people getting off that site, there's no sign, once you get down to the bottom of their hill.
And they talked about possibly putting a light in the light...
Then you have to go to the state, they have to get that.
Yeah, but, but, yeah.
And that, and you have to have warrants.
How long did you have, get the light for this school?
Like, two years.
Like, two years. It was like two years to get that light, and that's the village.
The one at Dow's Lane, it took Paul Mandell, it took him fifteen years to get that light.
And they actually put the, the request in, to the time they, they got the approval, not the light, but the approval was two years, believe it or not.
It's still, it's still, it's an issue, you know, because there's no, yeah.
You know, but that's actually, all these things you bring up, actually, it doesn't matter if there are three thousand units or two units.
Right, that's right.
How you got it handled?
Yeah, you know, perhaps these conceptual issues are going to be upfront, and then, then at the bottom as a footnote, some operational thoughts, you know, I...
Well, here's how I...
You don't want to clutter the, the major issues with the, there's only one nurse hurt, you know.
No, no, what I started out with was the policies and goals of the two thousand three comprehensive plan. Like, how's this fit with that? Then it's consistency with, with the county's master plan, Westchester twenty-twenty-five, how's it consistent with that? How is it consistent with the two thousand three com plan? You want all that, then I wanted to, the issues, same issues, coverage, bulk and mass on proposed buildings, those were all there. The precedent, again, you're getting into the precedent for, um, awaiting resource protection on this site, so what's...
And that's a slippery slope for down the road.
That's the point, that's the point. And then, then, I didn't get into the nitty-gritty, I stayed at, at that higher...
I think the flooding is broad enough to...
What?
Yeah, the air...
No, I think, I'm going to get into those little...
It's in that broad...
Trying to make the case at, at the higher level, what were the issues?
We'll, we'll supplement here.
Yes, please do, that's what, give me those issues.
You have to talk in place.
I, I think the flooding is a broad issue.
No, but then you get down to like the fire issue, the ambulance issue, the pedestrian issue getting on, onto the site, those types of things, stormwater management.
With the flooding issue, you've got all that, what, that, seventeen-hundred...
And how adequate is the current drainage pipes on Route Nine?
Yeah, they're removing fifteen thousand. We, we know from the school, that they're... You're not going to get too much sediment coming onto the site then.
What, what happens with all the, the water, all the, the underground pipes, that the Department of Water deals, I mean, it's, it's all like a hundred years old? Do they replace any of that, or are they just using exactly what they have, so it's going to be one burst, something like that?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the, the answer for that, this, this Department of Water, this is the DPW's responsibility.
But it's not going to be...
We've done studies on the above-surface stuff, we're doing studies on the catch basins, we're in a consortium to do the inverts this year, we've located them, inventory's next, nothing, you know, it's, it's, we're not proactive, but we're not reactive, we're, you know, as resources come available through grants, we're taking advantage of them.
Are these, are these, are they being asked to do anything beyond what is for code, especially with drainage?
Yeah, we're in the DEIS.
So, we're not even in...
We're not, we're not at that stage to... That, that, that will be in front of you eventually, but...
So, we got to that stage, you got to that stage of Continuum, because you were the planning board, and you started getting down to the nitty-gritty, because the board is not, no, no, you have more, more the expertise in those areas.
And, and that's your responsibility, your responsibility is to make sure there's a code if it's a...
So, in one way, that was the good part about it, but it also was that it was a zoning change, and that's not really the purview of the planning board, so the board of trustees...
That's right. So, does anyone, do you understand the zoning change implications that this applicant is proposing?
Do I understand? Yeah.
Instead of a zoning change, why not issue a special permit? Just a special permit.
Don't need a zoning change, it's for a special permit. A special permit would still have to meet certain codes, and so, that's in there as well.
Yeah, you might put certain restrictions, certain requirements on the special permit, to, to get the special permit, you have to have so many acres, so, so much setback, maybe you may have building size or something to that effect, screening. It, it, it gets a little looser, though, because you, you kind of, you don't have the same control as if it's under the zoning, though, with a special, special permit, yeah, just a series of requirements. If you meet those requirements, you can build it. But with the zoning change, you have to get the zoning change before you're going to be permitted to do it.
Yeah, special permit, what it does, I think it's actually a fairly good thing for these spot zoning kind of things here, is that it gives us more tools to use, but it gives us guidelines, too, where they have to file certain setbacks, because you're asking for a special permit, it means you have to file these broad things, but then